I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of September 8th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Kathleen Ammaral.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
Mary Beckwith.
Here.
Chris Oliver. Bess Coughlin.
Here. Just to let you all know, this meeting is being recorded. It will be rebroadcast on DCTV and can be streamed on their YouTube channel at any time. We now have set aside 10 minutes for public comment from the audience on any topic of this evening's agenda, and we have allowed 10 minutes for this. If you are interested in speaking, please approach the mic and state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. I think we'll move on to approval of the minutes for regular minutes of September 8th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Ammaral. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So four in favor, one absent. And for the executive session minutes?
So move, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Beckwith. All in favor?
Aye.
That's four in favor. And we now are going to move into the consent agendas, which we were all set or all sent. And let's vote on the fundraising requests first, which are the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 first things. Anyway, the Potter PTO, Quinn PTO, DeMello BTO, DHS PTO. Do I hear a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Beckwith. Is there any comments of any of the fundraising proposals? All in favor?
Good luck.
Aye.
Aye.
Four in favor. Passes. And then we have DHS music program, always exciting. Ms. Saban McGuire.
Yes, so I see Marielle is here this evening, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you wanted to come up and talk about the trip that you're taking to New— I have all the information in front of me, so you don't have to, but come on up, because I think it's really exciting. Yep, right up to the microphone.
Hi there. My name is Marielle Kripkala. I am the band and choir director here at Dartmouth Public Schools— or Dartmouth High School is where I'm based out of. The motion on the table, is that the proper terminology? Awesome.
Yes.
The motion on the table is our finals trip down to New Jersey. We take the high school marching band. We are a competitive band. We take them down to MetLife Stadium in New Jersey to compete in our regional finals. Right now, I think we'll probably be going against 10 other bands in our division. It's a wonderful experience for the students to be in the audience for some highly competitive ensembles and as well as compete themselves. They learn how to push themselves. They learn how to be respectful audiences, all of that. They learn what goes into the preparation for such a high-stakes performance. We had our first competition this past Saturday. It went extremely well. We ended up with a second-place ranking, only second to King Philip. We ended with an 82.8 in our scoring, and we won the captions of percussion, color guard, and visual. So we'll be heading down to New Jersey for November 8th. That's our finals competition. And then on the way back, we decided to kind of treat them with a little bit more of a well-rounded experience. We'll be heading into New York to watch the Harry Potter musical, which will be super fun. And we'll also be sightseeing a little bit for the Statue of Liberty. We'll kind of get to be tourists for day on our way back to say thank you to our students for representing our school department well and for their hard work throughout the whole season.
Great.
That's what I have.
Any questions? So did we have a motion?
No. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Ammaral. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're excited about that trip, so thank you, Marielle. You know, you even have Dave and Buster's in there on the first day. I saw that. Yeah, that's an exciting couple days.
Yeah. They're always impressive. So superintendent's update.
Yes, superintendent's report. So under teaching and learning, you may be aware—if you've caught any of the news this afternoon—that MCAS results have become public today. I was invited to Dartmouth, but I was invited to Arlington this morning, so that was a fun ride there and back. But we were invited by the commissioner's office because Dartmouth was one of 63 districts across the state to be invited, because we—in mathematics, our students in grades 3 through 8 have returned to what they're framing as pre-pandemic levels of achievement. And so that was something that I thought was worthwhile, to travel, to be recognized, or to have the district recognized in that way. It's our goal, of course, not only to return to pre-pandemic levels of achievement, but to actually surpass pre-pandemic levels of achievement. And we certainly look forward to being able to be one of the districts next year that has also returned to pre-pandemic levels of its student achievement in English language arts. But we're really pleased, and overall, we'll be giving a more in-depth presentation to the committee, probably in early November. But we're really pleased to see that, in many cases, Dartmouth has met or exceeded the state average, and so we'll be sharing that detailed information with you. We really only got the final MCAS results this past Friday and weren't able to talk about them publicly until this afternoon. So we're excited about that, and we want to, again, just take a minute to applaud certainly our students, but our faculty and admin teams who have done such great work. And one of, I think, the things that I recognized coming into Dartmouth right away was how hard you worked as a committee, as a community, as a teachers' union, to get kids back in school as soon as you could. And I think you're seeing that that is paying off in terms of their achievement right now across the state, because not everybody had the kids back in school as quickly as you did in Dartmouth, so I commend you for that. So congratulations to everybody, and really, it takes a lot of different folks who have contributed to making that happen. The launch of CKLA is officially underway. You've been hearing about it for two years, right? We've been working really hard on making sure that the literacy resource that we brought to the district was one of high quality, that our teachers were invested in. And I thank Katie Poveo and the team of folks—I see many people—who were really invested in making sure that that happened in a way that our teachers felt like they had a voice in bringing that resource to the district. We've been out in classrooms. We've gotten a chance to see it in use with both teachers and with our students just this past week. Friday, I was at the Quinn School, and I came in just in time to see a performance of Reader's Theater, which was closely aligned with CKLA, and watching little second graders— or third graders. I think they were third graders. Oh, they were second graders, who were up on stage really performing, but it was more about where—how clearly you could see speaking, listening, and public presentation skills, all of those things that are so closely aligned with the state standards. And that's really where the work is. So sometimes we get caught up in talking about the state standards as if they are sort of a punishment, but really, when you see our students, our teachers, our students invested in this work in that way, you see that we actually are looking at our students' learning in a way that does bring joy to what learning is supposed to be about. And I was really excited to just happen upon that this past Friday. I did miss the PBIS volleyball game, but I heard that that went well. As you know, again, those are things that we highlight because of the staff investment and involvement with one another, and really just enjoying themselves in front of the students. And how important is that for our students to be able to see how the staff work together and even have fun together, and that they brought them into that opportunity, that experience? And there's lots of hooping and hollering that goes on in the gym, but I have to say, I'm really impressed with the competitiveness of the Quinn School staff and their willingness to put on T-shirts and get out there and play volleyball. So just some of the things that I want to highlight, too, about CKLA is that we've been very invested in the training, the professional learning that comes along with implementing a new resource. It's not—it is what we refer to in our business as—it's a heavy lift to introduce a new curriculum into a school district, and our teachers are really working hard at it. And it's our responsibility to make sure that we're providing them with the kind of ongoing professional development that supports them as they implement things that are completely —not only new to the students, but new to them as well. And I thank them for that. Mrs. Poveo will be doing, again, a more in-depth overview of the process that we used and talking a little bit more about the components of CKLA. But we're pretty—we're really excited about it, and we're getting really strong, good feedback. We also have our elementary curriculum teams up and running. Again, no small feat. We're, you know, just about to start October, and we have a good number of faculty across the district who have stepped forward to serve, and this kind of commitment is important in paying attention to what our strategic priorities are and in making sure that we have teachers at the table, because as we talk all the time, our teachers are the ones who are out there enacting what those strategic initiatives are. So we're really pleased with that. We have 55 educators who are currently serving on our ELA math, social studies, science, and pre-K teams. Again, really great work that Mrs. Poveo has committed to, and we appreciate all the folks that are—remember, this is outside of their regular school day for the most part, and so it's a commitment by our educators. As far as budget and capital improvement, I think we're up to date. Do you have anything, Mr. Kylie?
Just one quick update. So the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, we found that they supported some of our requests for the October 21st town meeting. We had spoken about what we were requesting previously, but we've received word that they've supported technology hardware replacement for $200,000, security upgrades for $285,000, high school roof replacement for $250,000, flooring replacement for $100,000, which was not all—the—we had requested $200,000, but they supported $100,000. Playground improvements at the elementary schools, they are recommending $100,000. We had requested $250,000. So just to follow up and refresh, the projects that weren't recommended, that were on our list of current requests, were the high school track reconstruction, the HVAC repairs, the school bus, and the Dartmouth Memorial Stadium renovations. So we still have some work to do. There's a lot still on our list, but there were several projects that were recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and we appreciate that.
So under HR, I would mention that—I do want to mention that I had the opportunity to meet with the new HR director for the town of Dartmouth, Sue Cunningham, and we have begun to talk about ways in which we may be able to partner with this office. The—I think one of the strengths that Sue brings to Dartmouth is that she comes from a school department background, so she does understand, you know, some of the intricacies of a school department as opposed to a town—not that we're not a town department, but there are some real differences in the way that we operate. And so we're going to continue to have conversations and see if there are things that we can share the responsibilities for. As far as positions, not much has changed since the last school committee meeting. We still have two special education positions at Dartmouth High School. Those are the most critical positions, really, out there that we have to fill. And equally, I should say, is, you know, we ESP, LPN. We have a position over at—in the Atlas Program for an ESP. We have a security monitor still at Dartmouth High School. We have some advisor positions that are stipended positions that I would mention. We do have a database systems technician that we're bringing on board, so we're excited about that. That's actually tomorrow.
Coming in two weeks.
Oh, two weeks, great. So we're excited about that. And then food service worker and positions that we're filling that are related to parental leaves. So those are the kinds of job ads that you'll see either coming out, or at times, what we'll do is we re-advertise, because we want those positions to rise back to the top of the list for job searches. So that's been important. As far as family and community engagement, I would mention—because I don't think we talked about this last time, tell me if I'm repeating myself—but Katie Poveo and I did meet with Gina St. Pierre, the director of the library. It was the first time that I was in the Southworth Library, and I have to say, it just felt so—like—it just brings back memories of how much I loved being in a library, and that library is certainly an oldie but a goodie, and boy, does it—it is really well-resourced. And so a plug for folks that don't have a library card, you should go and get one, because there are so many resources available there. And then the other piece of it that's important to us as a school district is that—and we talked about this last year, but we want to extend—we have partnered with the library. They've been very good to us. We have strong partnerships at both the Cushman and the Potter Schools, but we want to make sure that we are working with the DeMello and the Quinn Schools to make sure that we're offering an opportunity that is a structured and systemic opportunity for us to get kids to the library and to make sure that they have library cards. So we've identified a couple of grade levels that we're going to start with, and we're hoping to do that this spring. So you'll be hearing more about that. But again, I go back just for a minute to the library. It really is a beaut—I've been to the North Library, which is the newer one, but the older one, obviously, it just—it has so many resources in it, and I think she—Gina told us that they had more CD—right? DVDs than any library in the area, so. So don't get rid of your DVD players. All the movies are there. Under safe and supportive schools, I want to thank Kim Redlon. I've mentioned before, but she has convened a district crisis team, and you're going to be hearing from her over the course of the year at one of our meetings. But then, as I've said, this is a renewed commitment for us, and it's not that we haven't paid attention here in Dartmouth to safety and security, because I see the attention that's paid to it when I read emails every morning that are going out from the administrative teams to the staff in every school here. But what we're looking to do is, again, systematize things, and she's really stepped in there and is working with local law enforcement, federal law enforcement. You had asked us to provide you an update as far as the homeland security, what we call it. They toured our buildings, they did an analysis of our systems, and they've provided us some reports, and we will be providing the committee with that information, but that will be in executive session. And I think that's coming up at our next meeting. I do want to say, we don't yet have a student representative, but we will. We have two who have agreed to come on board, but because they're not here yet—I think I'll just—I stole from Mr. Christopher Lee's Monday Minute just to give the kids a shout-out. The girls' volleyball continues to do really well. They had two impressive wins. They beat North Quincy and conference rival Barnstable, which is a big deal. Girls' soccer is doing very well. They are—even their record—and they are going to be celebrating their seniors this Thursday. Football remains undefeated. They're 4-0. We're excited about that, and the team is going to host a pon equit this Friday night. And as far as sportsmanship, I had to highlight this, because we love to lift up our students, but the football captain, Owen Shirtleff, who was apparently at the hospital for an injury during the game, and an old Rochester student was there, too. They were playing each other, and he went to check on his opponent's well-being, and the mom of that student sent an email to Coach White talking about—or just expressing his thoughtful gesture. So those are the kinds of things we want to make sure that we continue to celebrate. And those—that student is—does represent Dartmouth students very well. That's what I've come to know about Dartmouth students. So that's my report for this evening.
All good.
All good.
All good. Thank you. So at our last meeting, we had all just decided, and you had accepted, the willingness to be the delegate to the MAS C conference, but on further reading, I realized that we actually have to vote you in in order for it to be official. So I need a motion to vote Ms. Beckwith as delegate.
We didn't do that, huh? Okay. Madam Chair, make a motion that we nominate Mary Beckwith to be our delegate at the 80th Annual MAS C Mass Joint Conference on November 14th.
Second.
So that's a motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Ammaral. All in favor?
I vote on that.
You can abstain, or you can vote for yourself. We'll say four yes, one abstention.
Three yes, one abstention.
Or three yes, one abstention. I'm good at math, unlike our—
So I'll submit the form for us?
Yes, that's what we needed to do. And then also, at our last meeting, we had discussed looking at the resolutions.
I have to admit, I've only read the first three out of six.
Okay, you know what? Let's wait till next week. Or not. Yeah, it actually is next week.
That's fine, yeah.
I think that's fine.
Because I glanced at them, I'll be honest with you. I printed them out. You and I talked, I printed them out.
I don't think that we should waste everyone's time if we aren't fully prepared for that, but that's absolutely minor.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, we'll have plenty of time prior to that.
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
Not being rude, but can we put that on the agenda?
Yeah, I should have.
Because that way—
Then you—it'll—
Trager.
It will be on the agenda. Okay. Mr. Noons, did you have anything to add, or did somebody steal your thunder?
Somebody stole my thunder on one thing, but that's—and that's absolutely fine. I have—you know me, doesn't bother me in all these. But seriously, going back to the superintendent's report, when she talked about the MCAS results and everything else, I think that just shows what the committee and administration did when COVID was here, and we went one in, one out. You know, it was like, students went Monday—some students went Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then Tuesday, that type of deal, versus some districts that went—you know, everybody went—you know, there were some groups that went all week, and then they were off a week. It was almost like a vacation-type of deal and that. So, you know, that's—I think that has come back to pay strong dividends with our students and our test scores and such. And the only other thing I have, and I know I talked about it a little bit—I got a little bit more information, but not much. I talked about our home show on—Dartmouth High School Band Home Show on October 25th. It starts at 3 o'clock. Gates will open at 2:00, and right now, we have 18 bands. So I'm not—I'm not sure how they're gonna section it off and do it type of deal. Hopefully, I'll have more information next Monday type of deal as to how this is going to work. So—and we'll go at it that way, but, you know, in all seriousness, UMass Dartmouth signed in this past week, so we're gonna have the UMass Dartmouth Band. So it's gonna be a long day. We've got a football game Friday night, that on Saturday. It'll be a long weekend, but it'll be a lot of fun, a great opportunity for people to come out and see our students.
Shine.
And shine, and, you know, students from area schools. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Terrific. Anybody else? All right, we're gonna be in time for our next meeting. So the next scheduled meeting for the school committee is currently for Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 6:00 in the DHS Library Media Center. Motion to adjourn to a joint session with the select board?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Beckwith, seconded by—
Me.
Yeah, you. Mr. Noons, roll call, please, Ms—
Just a regular.
Oh, it's just regular?
Just a regular vote.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Ms. Brooks.
Yes, Dan.
This board leaves no stone unturned. We'll look at how we placed our telephone polls and how we fund our schools all in one meeting.
Yes, busy, busy, busy.
Of equal importance.
All right, so I would like to welcome members of the school committee as member, as well as members of the Dartmouth Public Schools Administration Team to meet with us tonight. I, along with Mr. Tadlebaum, had been asked to be a part of the strategic planning group, and we met with you for overtime over the course of the last year, and we're very proud of the end result, the strategic plan. We have not had a chance to sit down as a board to see your strategic plan, so I welcome you tonight to educate us on what it looks like to create a comprehensive strategic plan for Dartmouth Public Schools. So welcome.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to open our meeting—
Oh, sorry.
—of the school committee joint with the select board, and if I can just get a roll call from Ms. Coughlin. John Noons?
Yep.
Kathleen Ammaral?
Yeah.
Chris Oliver?
Yeah.
Mary Beckwith?
Yeah.
Ms. Coughlin?
Here.
We're good. This meeting is being recorded, as mentioned earlier, for rebroadcast on DCTV and later to be streamed at your leisure on the YouTube channel. So my understanding is that we want to see how our goals align, and I just want to say that, yes, Dr. Saban McGuire is going to give you an overview of our strategic plan, but in terms of our alignment of goals, it's right there in our mission, which we are committed to cultivating a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment that empowers all students to become compassionate, informed, and engaged members of their local and global communities. And I will add that we, as the school committee, strive to run a financially responsible, tight school department with respect to the taxpayers' money. Dr. Saban McGuire.
Great.
On behalf of the taxpayers, we thank you.
Do you want me to just jump into the strategic plan?
Please.
So, I mean, I never can miss an opportunity to talk about the Dartmouth Public School strategic plan, so thank you for letting me hold you hostage for a little while this evening. But it is important for us to have opportunities to continue to publicly discuss what's in our strategic plan, because one of our commitments here in town and to our school department and to our school community and to the Dartmouth community is that our strategic plan truly becomes or is something that we're living, and that there are clear goals, and that we have clear priorities, and that we have a process for which we can determine our progress toward meeting those goals. So as Ms. Brooks already mentioned, we did strive to have a broad cross-section of folks to serve on the district strategic planning team, and it was really important to us that we had members of the select board, that we had a member, or members of the finance committee, that we had family members who had children in our schools, that we had teachers, that we had ESPs, that we had central office folks, that we had school leaders. So you can see, this truly is a comprehensive list of folks that served on this district strategic planning team, and they weren't the only ones who had voice in the planning of our district strategic plan. And one of the things that we really centered our work around is what is our why. And coming into Dartmouth as then a new superintendent, it was clear to me that there had already been a considerable amount of work that had been done by folks in the district, and it was really important to honor that work, because from what I could see, there was community input into developing what we call the portrait of a learner, and to honor the competencies that— what we call the portrait of a learner and to honor the competencies that people in the community had already identified as being important in terms of thinking about what a Dartmouth Public Schools student should possess in terms of the competencies that we, as a school district, really look to support in developing in our students. And one thing that I really think was important here in Dartmouth, and I appreciate that the people leading this work recognize that maybe you have heard that there was a state, there were quite a few communities across the state that were focused on the portrait of a graduate. And what I really think was important here in Dartmouth, that it was a focus on the portrait of a learner. And really, the work that went on in determining sort of the competencies by grade level from pre-K right up to grade 12 was really quite impressive. And there is a detailed document that does give you real insight into what we're focused on here in Dartmouth. And what you'll also see in that document is how well-aligned those competencies are to what the state standards are. So it was, again, a comprehensive process that started not... There was a previous Dartmouth strategic plan in place. And as you all know, COVID definitely disrupted some of the work that had been happening in the community. And it kind of pushed the district in a little bit of a different direction. But when I came in as, again, a new superintendent just two and a half short years ago, it was really a prime time to bring the community together, to focus on where we needed to go next. And again, you see the number of people that contributed to this planning process. And we're really proud, if you see in this last box, that the strategic plan is implemented now. So it's not just something that we were thinking about in the work that went into drafting it, but the real work is in the implementation and the monitoring of the work that is happening as a result of having a comprehensive plan that has clear goals. The informing of the strategic plan, as I mentioned, you saw that really comprehensive list of folks that were involved in the development of it, but we had other stakeholder input. For example, the Portrait of a Learner survey, as I mentioned done before I got here. But we used that data to work with sort of like an extended opportunity to get opinions and feedback from extended groups of people. The entry plan survey is part of my entry. I did extensive surveys with many different groups in the community. We did a listening tour, meaning we were in all the schools. We had partnered with TLA, Teaching Learning Alliance, who also were part of helping to organize and meet with focus groups across the community. And that was really important because it gave people time to meet with somebody that wasn't necessarily connected to the school department. And so we're able to get real... Not that people aren't honest and authentic, but sometimes people like the opportunity to share their views and do that in a way that perhaps they wouldn't if the superintendent was in the room. Comprehensive data sources, artifacts, the previous strategic plan, as I mentioned, and AIR report, MCAS data, AP data, capital improvement planning has been going on for years and years here. The budget proposal, what you see, the empty chair in the room, and we highlight that because what we want the community to know is that, as Mrs. Brooks and Mr. Tattlebaum will remember from our planning time, that we made sure that we constantly reminded people that you're here representing yourself, but you're also here representing others. And that was really something that we saw, I think, during the entire, throughout the entire process. So phase one, phase two, phase three, I mean, we were through phase one, phase two. Guess what? Phase three never ends. Phase three just keeps going. And then, guess, you go back to phase one again at some point in phase two and phase three. Because that's the cycle of continuous improvement. And so nothing here is static. And it's something, again, that you'll see that we have to pay close attention to. We already mentioned the mission statement for the Dartmouth Public Schools, again, really important. And one thing that I think the community, I hope, values is looking at this mission statement, that there was truly a commitment to, and I would say a painstaking commitment, to ensuring that we had it right here, that the words were right and that every word that we have in both our mission statement and our vision statement, which I'll share with you, has real impact. And it's really, truly what we want to see for our students, for our school community, and for our community in general. Our core values, we had a lot of fun with core values. And one of the things that I hope you see that stand out is the acronym PRIDE. Because that truly represents what Dartmouth is about. There's so much pride in this community. And what we really were able to do is to embrace the... It was the conversation in the room that led to this. But, you know, what each one of those letters represents is truly what the folks that were part of the team had a real commitment to. So the vision statement, I did talk to Mrs. Brooks about this this past Thursday, because we talked about the importance of this vision statement and that this is truly a vision statement for the community. And if you look at the first part of the sentence stem here, united as one Dartmouth, we are invested in the ongoing improvement of our community. That's attributable to every department in this community. And we've had some conversations with folks like Dina St. Pierre over at the library and other folks about how to take that piece of the vision statement and really adopt it to something that can be unique and something specific to each one of the departments in the community of Dartmouth. But you see for us, and there's a reason that they're highlighted, you see the green and we go into the black font, we're Dartmouth Public Schools. This is who we want to be. Remember, a vision statement is aspirational, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to get there. It means it's going to take us some time to get there, but we have an aspiration to proudly offer unparalleled opportunities leading to educational excellence and success for current and future generations. And I can't understate the current and future generations piece enough because when we were in our strategic planning process, what's really clear is that the folks that go through the schools and the Dartmouth Public Schools return to the Dartmouth community. And in fact, a good number of them actually come to work in all of the Dartmouth community departments and certainly represent the community well in our schools. And that doesn't mean every person has grown up in Dartmouth. But I would say that you have a good number of folks who have gone through the school district here, who have grown up here, who have a real commitment to this community and to the children here. And so when you look at excellence and success for current and future generations, I just, I want to emphasize that that was really important to the planning team to really lift that up. Theory of action, a part of just, I think, any really strong strategic plan. And I'm not going to read this to you, but what I will say about it is this theory of action is really and truly a strategic plan in one box, right? So if then, so if we do these things, and if you look at the four bullets, you'll see as I go through the rest of the presentation, that each one of these bullets represents a strategic priority for the school district, our strategic goals. And what will happen if we support these as a school district, you'll see that that's where we will cultivate the safe, supportive, inclusive learning environment. So this is our action plan layout. Focus area one is teaching and learning, as it should be, because that's our business. The business that we're in is teaching and learning. And one of our major goals, teacher, under teaching and learning, is to ensure the alignment of our curriculum. And this isn't a criticism, it's just a fact. It's that some of that had gone a little bit by the wayside. And I'm sure that was related to budget. Because when you implement new resource, a new resource, I just talked about this in our school committee meeting, is we've implemented a new literacy resource in K to five, CKLA it's called. And it's an expensive, it's an investment, I should say. It's an investment. It's an investment in not only the resource, but the people. Because to implement a resource, regardless of what it is, you have to invest in the folks that you're expecting to carry out and to use that resource every day. And that's the professional learning. So you can see here, what I think is important is that if we say we're going to identify pilot and implement high-quality research-based curriculum, this is in the second box, pre-K to 12 in alignment, you as a community should be able to ask us how and if we did that and where does that exist. And so we can speak to that by talking about our new literacy resource. We can talk about some of the resources we're implementing at the middle and the high school level. So this isn't just elementary, but we had to have a plan in place. And if you go back to the first box, it says develop and implement a curriculum review cycle. Because that's something we knew that we needed to do so that we weren't in a position in the future where all of a sudden you needed curriculum in every single grade level and in every single content area. But instead, that you put yourself on a cycle so that you have, you're able to budget properly, you're able to forecast what you're going to need moving forward. So that's focus area, oh, focus area, objective initiative. So you'll see the same in here are our action steps. We have the proposed timeline. You'll see in most of our timelines, they never end. But that doesn't mean we're not accomplishing things as we are moving along. So we're really proud of that. And we look forward to sharing with the community some of the outcomes as we, again, we're in our second year. We do have a progress monitoring tool that we're using that we're looking forward to presenting publicly. So these are our four focus areas. Each one, as I just showed the slide before, is set up just like the previous slide. So focus area one, teaching and learning. Focus area two, safe and supportive schools. Focus area three, family and community engagement. Thank you for inviting us tonight. This is one of our opportunities to engage with the community and certainly strengthen our relationship with the select board. And then budget and capital improvements. And I know Mr. Kylie is going to talk about that. So I'm not going to get into each one of these. I've already talked about teaching and learning. But I will say, under safe and supportive schools, I did mention this in our school committee meeting, is we do have somebody who is leading our district crisis team. And again, our schools do a really good job with safety and security. One of the things that we recognized through entry planning is that we were doing things a little bit different in different buildings. And what we're looking to do, again, is to systematize so that we all are on the same page. And I'm thankful for the group that Kim Redlon, who's leading that work, and for the folks that are serving, including we have representation from police and fire. And so there's a broad group that is working to, again, ensure that our students are safe, our students and staff. Focus area three, I mentioned family and community engagement. We're really working on, you'll see, we have a new website that we launched just last year. We're looking to keep updating it and make it fresh and be sure that if that's the first place people are going to learn about us, that there is really updated and robust information about the school district right at folks' fingertips. And then focus area four, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Kylie, who's going to just give you an overview of where we are with budget and capital improvements.
Thank you, Dr. Sabine McGuire. So you'll notice in the left-hand box there, it talks about creating a joint vision to address school funding, facility issues, and staff recruitment. And, you know, I think that this is an exciting strategic plan. And it's one that can be actionable and implemented. But it does take funding to do that. So a few of the steps that we've already begun are in the spring with the budget cycle. We worked with Gary and the town administration and the finance committee to develop a plan by which we would gradually, we would use school choice reserve funds to supplement the budget as needed and wean ourselves off the use of those to the point where we just spend what we get in each year for the school choice funds. So we created that plan.
Another spam call. Sorry to interrupt.
Whatever. So, you know, I think we are in a better place than we've been in some time in terms of collaborating on the operating budget side. And I'm looking forward to this next budget cycle. And we have a lot of work to do. We continue to see, and some of the things that impact our, you know, operating budget and really inform the whole strategic planner, that we continue to see an increase in our high-needs population. You know, 43.5% of our kids are high-needs. We're still 270th of 322 districts in spending overall. And we have, when you look at staffing ratios, we have less staff than the state average. We have less staff than our comparable communities. So we're doing very well. We're not spending a lot. That's okay. But to improve, you need to invest in the community. So I think we're, you know, hopefully making strides towards that from an operating budget perspective. I guess I'd also mention that, you know, a big component of focus area four is related to capital improvements. And we are working both on the short-term capital improvements, which I mentioned in the school committee meeting earlier, in which we've received recommendations for the October 21 fall town meeting for technology hardware replacements, security upgrades, high school roof replacement, flooring replacement, and playground improvements at the elementary schools. So, you know, we're thankful for those funds. And I think we have a track record of using the funds that are allocated at town meeting for capital improvements wisely. And we will continue to do that. There are things that we asked for that were unable to be funded at this town meeting, like the high school track reconstruction, HVAC repairs, a school bus, and stadium renovation still stays on our list. So we have a lot of work ahead from a, like, current need, capital improvements. But we're appreciative for, you know, what was recommended at this point. The other big piece of this is long-range capital planning. And as you know, we have a committee that is, you know, organized by the select board that's looking at that and has a presentation tomorrow night on a portion of that plan. And, you know, I think it's encouraging. I think that we have some major project needs that are very soon on the horizon, that were identified by that committee. The high school roof, we talked a little bit, I mentioned it, in terms of the short-term capital needs, that would fund a feasibility study for replacement. And we're hoping to hear from the MSBA regarding acceptance into their accelerator repair program later this month, actually in October. And then the other projects, like I mentioned, the stadium, that's still, you know, a project that does need to be addressed, as well as eventually replacing the current schools. We have three schools that were built in the 1950s, and they will eventually need to be replaced. So we don't want to be in a position where the town needs to do that all at once. And we hope that through this long-term planning process, we're able to create a system by which we can do that over time and make it more affordable for folks. But, so, you know, I think we've made a lot of progress already on focus area four, but there's a lot of work ahead.
Right. And I'd just add that, and I know Mr. Kylie already mentioned it, but I just want you to be able to make the connection to the district strategic plan and see focus area four and how clearly it's identified and how really what Mr. Kylie just shared with you, if you look at key action steps, you can see that those steps are being taken. You know, and what are the initiatives? Communicate and advocate for instructional operational needs of the district. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that here. Because you can see that our major focus for focus area four is enhancing collaboration between the schools and town government. And this is one of the ways that we hope to do that. And again, we've met with, we met with Cody and Gary earlier in the year. I just recently met with the new HR person. And those are the kinds of relationships we're really looking to strengthen. So that's our dashboard. Yep. We're really proud of it. It's in all of our schools now. And really, that's a snapshot of our district strategic plan. I think one of the things that Mrs. Brooks and I talked about was the importance of sharing with you and with the community who are our staff. I mentioned to you earlier that many of the folks that work in our schools grew up here. They've returned to the Dartmouth Public Schools. They've committed really their lives here. So, this is an example, though, of when you look at what the schools are and what the needs are of the school is really dependent on the students that we serve. So, this is our pre-K staff, our smallest school. And although it's a small school, the high-needs, it's a great school, as Mrs. Brooks has spent a lot of time there for us in the last, really, two years. But you can see that there are quite a few folks who work there, but remember who the students are that they're caring, that are in their care there. There are some of our most fragile kids who need lots of extra support, so we're grateful to them. Here's our DeMello staff. Again, thinking about what's unique about each school is really important in looking even at the overall size of, of the faculties. The Potter, Potter and DeMello, they are pretty much, I think, the same building, Mr. Kylie?
Just flip-flopped.
Just flip-flopped.
Same designer, same contractor.
So, you can see the staffs look pretty similar. And then, we look at the Quinn and say, ooh, why are there so many people at the Quinn? Well, the Quinn also, it is our largest elementary school, and it also houses our, some of our special education programs. And obviously, with that, we have a number of staff who have very specialized skills in supporting some of our children. And here's our middle school. I like to joke about the middle school a little bit, because look how organized they are. This is the most organized group of all the schools.
Run by a, a couple of football coaches. You can see everyone has taken the football team picture.
I'm wondering if you would pick up on that, because that is exactly what it looks like, a football team picture.
Yeah, or pads, shoulder pads.
And they were already, like, sitting there when the photographer, Mr. Tebault, walked in to take their photos, right? And then, here we have Dartmouth High School. And so, what's important, and we want to share with the community, is these are the folks that make up our schools. These are the people working with our children every day, and we want to celebrate them and just, we keep them front and center, and just please know that the folks that are working in our, in your schools, in the Dartmouth Public Schools, are really committed people, and they do a great job in supporting our students. And we'll go, just go back to "We Are One Dartmouth," and hopefully, you'll use that vision statement and somehow incorporate it into the work that you're leading here in the community.
Challenge accepted.
By the way, if you'd like to look at the district strategic plan on the website, there is a link here, and it is actually a beautiful document. We like to show it off. So, this is, this is the more detailed plan. What I just gave you was an overview of the plan, but on the website itself, there is a link to the plan that gives, you'll see, there's different parts to it. There are, you know, some pictures, there's some narrative around the planning process, the phases we went through, the mission, the reason for a mission, what a vision statement represents, and so on. But there is a detailed strategic action plan as well.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask if this board has questions. Mr. O'Neill, I saw you busily taking notes.
Yeah, well, Jim and, Jim and I have had the opportunity to sit down on, on some of the focus area four issues. We discussed school choice and the fact that that number has not increased in how many years, twenty-nine, I think it was?
Yes.
Which is outrageous. And I think, you know, a town like Dartmouth has a, has a distinct opportunity where our neighbors, maybe to the east, do not. So, you know, there's a little bit of traction there with the state delegation. I spoke to Chris Markey recently about it again. We had a meeting, Heidi, myself, and Cody, with the state representatives, and that was one of the issues that we brought up. They are, they're working on it. That's going to be a slow process, for sure. I mean, a lot of the delegations from some of the larger towns in the, in cities in the state have, are on the flip side of that equation. So, you're going, you know, we'll be up against it, but I'm not, I'm not afraid of the fight.
Chris, I just want to clarify, when you talked about school choice, where we're sort of upside down is that for twenty-nine years, the state has set the price as $5,000, even though it has, you know, annually gone up for per pupil expenditures, the state still caps it at 5,000. So, the traction we're trying to get is letting our state reps know that even if they incrementally went up, it would be helpful. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead, Chris.
The, no, it's really not that issue. Jim, the, the challenges that you have, you know, I'm looking at that picture, I know a lot of those guys in that front row.
And they're getting ready.
They're getting ready to kind of bail out. You know, what are the, what are we doing? You know, where, where is Dartmouth right now when we look at retirement ages? You know, what's that scale look like? We know where the enrollment's going. Where are we on the teachers?
We've, we've had a lot of people retire over the last eight years or so. We still have, you know, a group with a lot of years of service that will be retiring. I think, you know, the biggest hurdle that, that Dr. Saban McGuire and I face when we're trying to replace folks is, is health insurance. So, we are not competitive with many other communities in terms of our health insurance costs, although I, I do recognize that the town has tried to make some strides in that regard and, and, you know, offering some, you know, a different plan with, with a health savings account and everything. But the reality is that we lead with those conversations in a lot of our hiring processes because we don't want to waste our time and get people to a finalist or our selection, and then they walk away. It happens. So, it's a great community to work in. Many of us are thrilled to work here, but when it comes down to it, if we're not competitive, and in some cases, our salaries are not as competitive as other communities, in addition to, to health insurance, that, that puts us at a big disadvantage, so.
So, I'll be on the insurance committee when, when those meetings start up again, and I'm looking forward to it, because I think, you know, that traverses every department that we have in town. And, and, you know, competition is a word that you brought up that, that I will reiterate. We can't function if we're not competitive. I don't want to be the, the lowest guy, but I also don't want to be the highest guy. I need to be somewhere to the fifty and sixty percentile where we're competitive, because the fact remains Dartmouth is a great spot. People want to, people want to work here, they want to live here. So, let's take advantage of that. Let's get us to a point where, when those decisions come at that last meeting with, on, on an inter, an intake, that it's not the benefits that blow, you know, blow the deal. So, so I'm really looking forward to being involved in the, that committee. You know, you, you talked about, in the vision statement, about investment. You know, it, it's a great choice of word, because it isn't just the investment for the volunteers, for the, the teachers, you know, people invest a lot of time. All the board members, all of our board members, the collective employees, but it also requires investment from the taxpayer and town meeting members also. You know, this, this collaboration is very important, because you need to get out ahead of those discussions. So, I'm glad that you're really engaging the community, because at some point, we're going to have to have those discussions. And what does an investment look like to, to you? Might look different to you. However, we all gain by having a, a strong school system. There's no question about that. On, on the focus area two, safe and supportive, the, what's the district strategy for, for this mental health issue? You know, they, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of work being done on it now, but my wife's in the, you know, preschool area, daycare, and wait till you guys see what's coming down the pike. You know, I'm sure you already know to a certain extent, but it's not good. It really isn't. You know, how far are we ahead on that issue? How much investment are we going to need in order to make sure we're doing the right thing?
I would say that you've done a really good job in investing in support folks, people who are supporting students' social-emotional learning. We have a number of adjustment counselors in all of our schools. As a matter of fact, I think it's quite impressive, and that's one area that I think the district has invested in, and I think that some of that came out of the COVID-19 money originally. I know that Dartmouth had dedicated some of that, the ESAR funds, to expanding the, the staff to support students' social-emotional learning.
And some of it is now being funded through the school choice funds that we're going to attempt to wean off over time, so.
And the other thing that I think, again, shows a spirit of collaboration between the town and, and the school, the town, the select board, and the school department, is the, the allocation of the opioid funding. I mean, some of that money we're using in interesting ways, I think, are hoping to use. One, one, one area is that we've invested through the use of, of the funding to invest in a social-emotional learning curriculum at Dartmouth High School. And that's something that wasn't in existence before, and so, we're looking forward to the implementation of that resource, which hasn't happened quite yet, but we do have a structure in place. Also, the expansion of vape detectors. Now, when you think about the vape detectors, it's not about us, it's about preventative measures, but it's also about how do we then, as a school district, when we know a student is maybe struggling with a nicotine addiction, how do we then direct them and their parents to the resources that they need to hopefully divert some of that behavior? Also, there's a commitment to a, a new safety person for Dartmouth High School, and what's important about that, and it's, again, not about us policing our students, but about having adults in the building that are ensuring that our hallways are safe, that our bathrooms are safe, safe, and really, these are the folks, they build really strong relationships with the kids. So, there's a benefit to that. We're also looking to use some of that funding for after, to expand after-school programming. One thing that we don't have here in Dartmouth, at, at least I'll speak direct to the elementary level, is we don't really have many after-school opportunities for our youngest learners. And so, that's a focus of ours and that, ours, and that does exist in our strategic plan.
When, when you talk about safety, do we, have we taken advantage? There's a, I, I think there's a grant that covers it too, but there's a program through SERPIT that they will do an assessment on buildings, doorways aligned with fire, police. Have you seen it?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to it. We've, we, through Chief Levesque, were connected with the Department of Homeland Security last year, who came down and did a comprehensive security assessment of each of our buildings. They were great to work with, very practical suggestions that, you know, are actionable. Part of that is what we're hoping to fund with the $285,000 request at the October 21st Town Meeting, is to address some of the issues that were highlighted in the, in that assessment. They look not only at the physical security, but the policies and procedures that we have in place in the buildings, the staffing that we have, how we're, how we're, how we're teaching kids, you know?
So, this, this program that I believe is still running, and I'll get some more information, I'll just send it to you and see if, see if it'll help, i- is more on the physical side. Labeling of doors, so when, when that, when it, when either a fire truck or a police officer rolls up, they hit that screen, they can tell exactly what B5 door is and where it's, where it is. And what camera's going to be in the, the library. They know exactly which one to hit. So, I, I'll see if I can get some more information on that. It's more physical.
Yeah.
But maybe it dovetails well with, with the work.
It probably, it probably would. I mean, those are a lot of the things that we talked about with homeland security.
Yeah. The, what, what can the town do in the areas of consolidation of tasks, work? You know, sharing, I'm sorry, I'm probably stealing some of the, some of the questions that Heidi probably has. You can check them off.
Yep.
Sharing services between town departments, that we can help each other, I guess, try and get some kind of savings. Are there overlaps, or are there not overlaps? I'm sure maybe, it might even come out in that, that committee, but I'm just curious.
Well, I'll answer, one of them has, the most recent, has been our HR hire. For, in going forward with that position, we hired someone that actually has not only municipal experience, but school department experience. Although she's housed in this facility, she is working with the school department, and specifically, I think Kate Genthner, who, the secretary to the superintendent, when a new hire comes on, she's able to assist with that. So, that's been our most recent. We're also sharing youth advocate services, and the DART Substance Use Coordinator is working, both are working with the school department. I think we have some of those little pieces happening.
Well, that person who I met with, Rachel, right?
Yep.
I met with Rachel last, last week, I think it was, and, and she and Dolores were both at Dartmouth High School for the open house. But one of the things that Rachel and I talked about with the team is how she can work to help support, exactly what I was just talking about, students who may be engaging in that kind of risky behavior, whether it's vaping, and, and how we can connect to offer support to those students and those families outside of Dartmouth Public Schools, but still in collaboration with. So, even things like, you know, we just met with our, your Director of Libraries, Dean of St. Pierre. Now, it's not, it is sharing services, because one of the things that we're looking to do is collaborate, and they, they are wonderful collaborators, but we're looking to just expand on that collaboration so that more of our students are accessing library services. And so, that's a way that we are sharing resources. It might not seem like that monetarily, but when your community and the folks who live in your community are using your town services, that's something that you do want to promote, and those are the things that we're focused on.
Yeah, we tried to tie in historical a little bit, too. Maybe that program works again this year or not. I'd like to see it, like to see it happen, but.
I mean, if I could add too, I mean, because I think it would be a shame not to mention the collaborative efforts that are really outstanding between Dartmouth Community Television, who goes above and beyond for our, you know, our school operation. The DPW is fantastic to work with. If we need them for something, they're always there. And the Dartmouth Police Department, who we work very closely with, you know, and have, have three school resource officers in our buildings, and then collaborate on crisis planning and lots of other, you know, lots of other things with them, so.
I guess the point, my point would be, if you do see anything, that there is the potential for savings either for the town or for the school department, that we can collaborate on fleet management, anything like that. It's worth throwing those ideas out to see if we can engage. Lastly, so the investment, getting back to that, strong, engaged, and most importantly, successful system pays dividends on everybody's investments, right? So, we're looking for dividends. People have to remember that when we come to them at some point and say, you know, we need, we need some investment. And it goes from, well, I don't have kids in the system. Doesn't matter. That house value is still, still as high as it is because we've got a great system. So, thank you for your work.
Stanley?
David, I want to go last, yeah, thanks.
All right. Dave Tatabbaum?
Thank you. It's always a privilege to talk to the school department, thank you. We're all very aware of the statistics about how low the spending rates are, and we talk about it year after year. I look at it, trying to look at it from a very high-bird's-eye view and the sequence of events. My hat's off to Jim Kylie and our whole group of long-range planning, because I think that's first and foremost. What do we need to spend over the next forty years? Because we, because it's, if we don't, we're going to be in bigger trouble, not, not just with schools, but certainly with a flushing toilets, a drink of clean water. But once we get that in order, do the best we can with that. Then we have a budget advisory group, the message- The message was very clear from town meeting. Are we spending money as efficiently as possible throughout the town? I think we do a pretty good job. I'd like to feel we can find some of those funds. Maybe there's some departments and categories we could minimize or maybe shrink, and I'd like to think we can then support some of that money and move it towards the schools. And then we look at what's needed for the short and long-term needs for the schools, and kind of money that's going to involve. And if I'm a taxpayer, whether I have three kids in school, or I'm a senior and have no more kids in school, if we can prove to our citizens that we are spending our money wisely, and we're doing the best we can, and we're underfunded in our schools, we can ask, here's what we need, based on this overall assessment and jobs like this, this presentation. I think it'd be much, no one wants to spend more money, but I think there's confidence that we've done it the right way, and the sequence of events that says, here's what we need, and this is what our kids need. I think that we have a good shake over the short term, then then put together a fund that may require adjustments in our tax rate, whatever that might be. But how can we not do that without the sequence of events? And I think it's happening. And I think that the end result of all that is, we don't spend enough money on our schools, period. And money's not going to fall from the skies. It's going to be done in a sequence that's fair and has facts attached to it. And I'm hoping that over the short term, the next couple, three years, we can put this together and do it the right way in collaboration just like this. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I got a note here from a resident, and I know you expounded on this, but maybe you want to deal with it a little further. The school's strategic plan consists, makes note of One Dartmouth, as you see. But what does that mean to the schools, and in what ways will the approach show up in the broader community?
Well, I think that one of the, when you talk, as far as the schools are concerned, I mean, we're promoting One Dartmouth throughout our school communities. It's something that you'll, you'll see in every building that you walk into now, whether it's One Dartmouth pin, that I know Mr. Kylie has his on tonight, that we're going to.
Am I on?
Wow, I got a good one.
So.
Shamo.
We will. We're planning on that. But, so within the school community itself, there is a real commitment to One Dartmouth. That's something you'll hear, and you'll hear folks talking about, whether they are wearing One Dartmouth t-shirts, One Dartmouth pin. We are One Dartmouth. I mean, we talk about it a lot. We don't just talk about it, we're committed to it through our strategic plan. Whether it's, you know, looking at the way our elementary schools are working together. We have three different elementary school buildings. Really pleased with the work that the three principals of those schools are doing to align the work in all three of those buildings across the district, and to really create a sense that we're all connected in the work that we're doing. So, and with our middle school and our high school folks, too, we're, we're coming together as a leadership team in order to ensure that we are all aligned in our work, and that that work is being driven by what exists in our strategic plan. Whether, again, I'll just mention, because we met with them today, our union leadership. We sit down with our leadership in this district, and we have really meaningful conversations about the work that's happening in our schools, and how we can support each other in making sure that Dartmouth Public Schools is offering, you know, the highest quality educational opportunities for students, and we're supporting our educators and staff. As far as the town, reaching out to the town itself, this is one way that we're doing that. We're saying we're part, we are One Dartmouth. We're not the school department and the town. We're all part of the same community, and we all want the same things for this community. And we know that investing in schools, you said, you know, we talked about property values, and those are important. And the other thing that's more important, really, is the support you have for your young people, and how they return to your community as community members, and how they contribute to a healthy community. Because this is, this is a community that I see so much commitment from in terms of the folks that live here and work here, and that's something that you want to promote, and it doesn't happen by accident. You have to be intentional in the way that you honor the, not just, I think, you know, Mr. Kylie talked about it, this, you know, whether it's the school department, the police department, the fire department, and we're all leaning on each other all the time. We are part of one community.
I'm going to talk a little bit more about, that's on my list as well, so thank you, Stan. Any more, Stan?
Well, I just, I know you have the five-year plan, and you mentioned briefly that we're going to need to replace a school at some point, or more than one school. So where, where are we going to put these schools?
Kathleen, Kathleen and I both have follow-ups to the last question.
So I'm trying to make a point, but, you know, this is going to come faster than you think. And to solidify properties doesn't happen overnight. And we have very little property the town owns.
I think Mr. Kylie has been working on it, and he has discussed some options in prior meetings, so.
And that was discussed at our September.
But it's just something I want to bring up. I know it's not going to happen tomorrow, but we can't drag our feet about this. We need to be very, very cautious in how we approach this. We don't want to have to, at some point, go out to the public and find a piece of property to build a high school.
Right. So September 17th, at the Long Range Capital Planning Night, they talked about the plan. That was a night specific to schools. And I just want to say that I could identify in the audience everyone but two people. Therefore, I hope that there were 30,000 others watching it on TV at home, because this is important.
We hope.
But we can't get ahead of ourselves. It's a plan. The first thing we're doing right now is going forth with the high school roof. And it was very well laid out over, and this plan is not over 40 years. We're looking at, I mean, you know, maybe 20. And it's a lot of work. And it's not like any other thing, but unfortunately, we can't put the cart before this horse. We have to make sure we have the funding and the community investment, the community support for it. And that's why I, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to close with this. It's all about money. At the end of the day, it's always about money. What can we afford or not afford? So we need to come up with a plan at some point, a little, much longer than the next year or so, but with the thought that we need to invest in the town of Dartmouth. And if we don't, we're missing the boat, and we're not going to succeed. Thank you.
Can we have comments about the One Dartmouth now?
Yes, please.
Mr. Oliver?
We're probably going to say the same thing, because we both raised it. I just, when you were asking, someone wanted to add to what Dr. Saban McGuire said, and something that I've recognized through our strategic plan and some of the efforts throughout our school, that One Dartmouth also means, the way that it is seen is through children seeing themselves as active participants, having a voice and a say, and also seeing themselves at our high school, right? It's, there are options at that high school level for students, where they can choose Bristol-Aggie, or Voak, and that there is a place for everyone, of course, but I think there's been an investment in having a similar experience, and then having that sense of belonging, and saying, wow, like envisioning themselves at that high school level, because some of the efforts that are, that are being done that I haven't seen before. So I'm very proud of it, and I think that is another way that we are One Dartmouth, where students are entering at pre-K and then wanting to stay through grade 12.
Mr. Oliver?
Is that different?
No. It's actually a little bit different. I'm going to take it another step further. I guess for me, One Dartmouth means something a little bit different through the eyes of both parents, caregivers, as well as our students in Dartmouth, that all of our students have these same opportunities across the town. When I first came on 13 years ago now, I don't know if that was, if I could say that was the case, that whether you were a student in DeMello versus a student in Potter versus a student in Quinn, that you're receiving the same educational experiences as well as class ratios, might not have been the same. There was a preschool, but it was located, there was only one preschool, that was located at Cushman. There was no preschool in the north end of town, and I made it a point several years ago that we needed to get a preschool program in the north end of town for those families for the north, that reside over there. And we have one now. So to me, you know, equal opportunities across all grade levels and across all schools and across all ZIP codes is One Dartmouth.
That's interesting. Kathleen, so that really does dovetail with the investment in the town, because when you look at that, I never thought of that. When you look at that issue with enrollment, you've got to keep those kids in our system. We have to be competitive. We have to show them that we're investing in the programs that we have and the buildings that we offer. You know, in Westport, in the high school, when they had an investment in Westport, there was a shift from Stang to Westport. And Stang felt it. They felt it pretty badly. And it never dawned on me that those kids have a choice. Our kids have a choice. So it's about the jobs, too, and it's about keeping good jobs in this town. And you can't continue to have a slippage, so you have to, you have to, you know, backfill it. You have to invest in it. And it's important, because we, you know, $70,000 spent in Dartmouth with a Dartmouth person stays in this town. It gets spent in all the local areas. That, there have been study upon study about that issue. And we need to keep good jobs in town. We need to keep the money in town. And that just helps every other aspect of it, so, in my opinion. Sorry.
And now me. So first on my list was One Dartmouth. I grew, I am a townie, lead green, we all know that. But when I grew up through Dartmouth Public Schools, we had the 4-7 and the 4-8. And we had the 4-7 and the 4-8 that had a hockey game, that had a football game, that had, we always were in, you know, competition with whichever end of town you were in. And I really do see that has been eliminated. We've always had one high school, but we still knew which side we came from. I see that differently. I would like to give, there was a student at Dartmouth High School that developed the one D to represent One Dartmouth. The name escapes me. I tried to give the credit to Ryan Shea, the principal, and he immediately told me the student's name, did not take the credit. But I thought that was fabulous. And that one symbol solidified to me the work that we, on this board, need to do. Because one of the things that you said was, it's not all about the ZIP code, it's about we're One Dartmouth. It is not the school budget versus everybody else. We are One Dartmouth. We have one budget. When I pay my taxes, they go into one big pool, and then they're, you know, kind of shopped out. But we are One Dartmouth. The other thing I wanted to just highlight is the strategic plan process. Now, you know, truth be told, I think everybody knows that I worked for the Dartmouth Public Schools for, since I kept going back 40 years, but, well, I know, and I'm so young. But over the years, working on strategic plans, it was always important that the people that were developing the strategic plan were the people that were going to carry out the strategic plan. Because if somebody creates a plan for you and then hands it to you, it doesn't mean anything to you. And if they think it can be done, but have never walked in that trench, they have no idea. But we had people around the table that were going to implement that plan. And that's how we've done strategic plans in the school department for years, and the process was fabulous, and the group that led us through was equally fabulous. And it's very personal to us, because one of the things that they would talk about is what's going to be our picture on our main page. So, you know, we were up against other communities, and they were known for clocks, building of clocks, and they had a clock tower. Oh, gosh, what is it going to be? Well, it's One Dartmouth. That's who we are. And we take great Dartmouth pride, and that's why we use that acronym. And I'll be honest, our greatest sense of Dartmouth pride is our athletic teams when they perform, our band when it performs, our theater when it performs, and our students when they are successful. There's also a bit of Dartmouth pride when you go to the beaches, okay, in our beautiful coastline. But the majority of our Dartmouth pride comes from the school department. I have to also give a shout out to DPW, because on trash days, when they pick everything up, that's a source of Dartmouth pride as well. I'm sure there's another department that I'm going to get hate mail from. But I do think we can't have Dartmouth pride. We can't sell Dartmouth pride unless it really does exist. For those of you that want to see it, watch the football games on Friday nights, even when they're televised, and see the team go over to cheer with the students that are there supporting them, and you get that One Dartmouth feeling immediately. I also want to talk about the process that the school department has done to think about inclusive versus exclusive opportunities. For example, as the Chair of DART, which is our Dartmouth Advocates for Addiction Recovery and Treatment, one of the things that Dr. Saban McGuire talked about is expanding the after-school program. We know that folks that feel disconnected look for something to do to make them feel connected. By keeping our students involved, and 65% of our students at Dartmouth High School are involved with sports, theater, or the music program, which is incredible. Let's talk about the other 35%. We do have a lot of committees at Dartmouth High School. But as Dr. Saban McGuire said, the transportation is the key. So it's an exclusive practice to offer opportunities for after-school programs and say, but a someone has to pick you up. If you don't have someone that can pick you up at whatever time that is, it's exclusive to offer it, and then not everybody can participate. So it's a way for us to look, can we provide the busing? Can we expand the opportunities? Can we let families know how important it is to keep their kids involved? And that's a way to make the practice inclusive. And a beautiful example at Dartmouth High School, and I believe they're also doing it at Dartmouth Middle School, is the unified sports team. To see our students who have never played a sport because they were excluded for many reasons, perhaps they didn't have the skill set, they didn't have the stamina for it. But on the unified sports team, filled out with their peers who have skills, it's beautiful to watch. The expansion of the program for our 18- to 21-year-old students at Dartmouth High School, and I'll be the first to admit, although you know I love the school department, I thought, really? Do we need this? And then I went there, and I saw the program, and I thought, these are our kids. We should be educating them in our town. And the program that Heather Church is, sorry, Stephanie Church, is running at Dartmouth High School, is beautiful. And if I had a child or a grandchild involved with that, I'd be so thrilled that they were having these opportunities to get some real-life skills that are going to benefit them in the long run. Tonight, we invited you here for exactly this. The process was fabulous. I accept the challenge. I take on the United as One Dartmouth. We are invested in the ongoing improvement of our community. And I challenge the Select Board to fill in the blank. How are we going to keep that up? And then I intend to challenge all of our departments, how are they investing in that One Dartmouth? Each of our departments, just like your department, has facets. We have, in DPW, they've got people that have sewer, and they have people that don't. How do they serve One Dartmouth? So I thank you for being the inspiration to our board tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. And I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes. Who made the motion?
I don't think so.
Second. Mr. Nunes made the motion. Kathleen, second. All in favor, or do we do a roll call?
Nope.
All in favor. All in favor. And we're done. Yeah.